We'll open the P. L. Wester meeting of September 24th. Start with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I have one announcement. The United States Environmental Protection Agency has issued a draft discharge permit for the town of Oxbridge. The joint public comment period and public notice of the public hearing pertaining to the issuance of a draft permit has been opened. See the website or the notice for special details pertaining to the schedule. The public hearing will be 10:25 at 6:30 at the senior center. Anybody else have any announcements? Okay, citizens forum? Anybody for citizens forum? Okay. All business. High school project update?
Can we take care of these people out of order?
Oh, sure. For Lawrenceburg, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Attorney, you got to be by the hour. We don't agree.
Thank you very much.
Murphy's Way?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Henry Lane here on behalf of the residents of, most of the residents of Murphy's Way. As you know, at least those of you who have been on the board for a number of years, we've spent several years now trying to get all the subdivision roadways approved and accepted by the town. And I think we're getting close to the end of the list, but there's a few outstanding, including Murphy's Way. As we did with many of the other streets, we have been in contact with all of the residents and made a diligent effort to try to acquire all the necessary rights and easements so that they could be conveyed to the town upon acceptance. And virtually every other street, I guess we've managed to do that, but unfortunately in Murphy's Way, we've run into a roadblock with one resident who was unwilling to voluntarily relinquish their rights, their private rights in the way. So of the residents, we have all, but we have all the rights and easements we need except for one individual who technically owns a little piece of the street in front of his house. And despite our efforts, the efforts of neighbors, and I guess several efforts by the town manager, we have been unable to convince him of the benefits of having a public way in front of his house. Fortunately for the residents, in the last two years, the town has accommodated us by allowing us to sign waivers and continuing to service the roadway during the winter, but obviously that option is running out. So at this point, having exhausted all our other options, I know the town has, at least on one other occasion, taken it upon itself to exercise its power of eminent domain to acquire rights in a street where a developer disappeared without leaving the necessary rights. And I guess we're going to make the same request. We have, I think we've submitted a petition for the fall session of the annual town meeting requesting acceptance and authorizing the board to exercise the power of eminent domain to acquire the outstanding easements. So as much as the town does not like to do that, we, having exhausted all other options, we're going to be asking the board to do that one more time to accommodate the residents of the street so that they're not left in, you know, this private, private way limbo forever. They say the residents have spent literally thousands and thousands of dollars to finish up the punch list items on their street acceptance, get the plans done. They've got as-built plans prepared. They've acquired all the necessary rights and easements except for one homeowner. And that's all they can do and ask the town for their assistance to finish the project.
Is the one resident, is that on the cul-de-sac?
It's a, it's a dead end.
At the end towards the universal?
Yeah, it's just before the end of the street, yeah.
Now, he owns, he owns half of the circle?
Doesn't own half the circle. He owns just a little bit of the street in front of his house, right before the circle.
He's not in the cul-de-sac. It's just before the cul-de-sac, so he owns the half of the street along his frontage.
Yeah. We have the rights to the other half of the street. We can get past them, but, you know, it makes it hard for the plow to...
And he's looking for some type of payout?
No, as we understand it, he has young people who ride their illegal motorized dirt bikes on the road, and he's afraid that if it becomes a public way, the police will arrest his miscreant youngsters.
He's been informed that the riding of this, these vehicles is illegal, even though it's private property anyways, but it's, yeah, it's, it's a little deeper than that. I think in the end, yeah, it's gonna be about, it's gonna be about money.
Yeah, I just don't know how that stands if you've got a piece of the road that's not, we don't take it.
However, I don't know what the fair market value of a, half of a street is.
Yeah, well, that's the question. If there was a market value, who would pay that?
Well, I guess in these situations, typically, we, you know, we'll agree indemnify the town for any, for any cost that's incurred, but, you know, by all accounts, having the street accepted is a benefit, not a, not a detriment, so. Typically, the appraisals we've done for those kinds of situations is that there, you know, there's no, there's no reduction in the value of the property. In fact, the value of the property is enhanced. So, you know, we give them their nominal dollar and call it a day. I don't know of any town locally where anybody's challenged that. You know, of course, there's always the first, and maybe this will be the one, but my, my guess is that it'd be very difficult to convince anybody that there's a downside to having the street accepted and plowed and maintained by the town as opposed to having it paid out of your pocket.
Henry, do the residents have a cause of action against that individual by virtue of the fact that they're suffering harm by not having it?
We've explored that, but we're unable to find any, any law to support that proposition. We, you know, we looked at the possibility that we could go at it from the approach that, you know, the developer had inadvertently neglected to retain those rights because it, actually, in this case, the developer did retain some of the rights, but not many of them. So some of them we were able to obtain from the developer, some we had to get from the individuals. And so we thought perhaps we could move on the, on the idea that the developer had inadvertently, you know, failed to reserve in that case, but at the end of the day, that's a long, difficult row and expensive. It's probably be less expensive to just go this route. And of course, that would have an uncertain outcome as well, and it could be in court for a couple of years if they wanted to fight about that.
Also, I thought the law said that they all had to be in compliance or be willing to sign off, and you're only getting 11 out of the 12. Is that gonna be a problem when you go to court?
No.
Go to court after the taking?
That's what he wants us to do.
Then, then there's no problem.
Right. That's why we're here, so the town can...
I understand that, but I, I thought that everybody had to sign off, and apparently everybody doesn't have to sign off. That's all I'm asking.
Well, the town has traditionally taken the position that they would like everybody to sign off, but in the, in the, I think one other case, I can't remember the street where they couldn't get the, which one was it? It was Rob Knappick's, you know, which street was that? Chocamol?
No.
Oh, no, Chocamol, they took everything.
If everyone would sign, Mr. Rice, then we wouldn't have to go down the eminent domain road. We wouldn't have to take, to go sort of a hostile taking, if you will. We wouldn't need to take it because the residents would all agree. So we wouldn't, the only reason we have to go down this road is because we have this one recalcitrant...
I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure that we're gonna win, that's all.
Yeah, that's the reason, yeah.
Well, there's no problem with taking. We can take, we can take the property. The, the only liability is if it's deemed that, you know, it was worth something and we have to pay some amount of money, which again is unlikely because it's really an improvement in the property, not a detriment to the property. It'd be nice to get these things out of the way. How long's it been?
Well, we've been working on this for at least a couple of years, so.
Couple, 10 years?
No, I think the whole, whole thing, not just this street.
Yeah, I don't know. We've been working on it. We, I think we've done, I don't know. I mean, our office has done, what, seven or eight of them? And there's been some others that have been done, so, you know, probably there's a dozen or more out there, and there's still a couple out there, I guess. Well, I guess there's another one, a sand wedge, I think, is coming up. Didn't I see that? So, but for better or for worse, the economy's been down for the last four or five years, so there haven't been a lot of new streets built in the last four or five years, so once we get through this group, I, I'm assuming that going forward, you know, the planning board will be a little more vigilant about making sure that...
You're right.
...these rights are retained so we don't have this problem going forward.
That won't be a problem unless we make the mistake of having a town planner. That comes to pass and all bets are off. I don't have any objection to, to the taking. The residents have, you know, done all they could. It's not as though we're, we're jumping in on the first, first cry. I don't like it, but by the same token, I'd like to have the thing resolved.
Yeah, I really don't have any problem with it either. I just, I mean, everyone except for one is set.
Correct.
And if we go into, at that point, you would have to do all, are you trying to get this in for, not this fall?
Yeah.
Trying to get it for the fall?
For the, for the town meeting. Just to make it clear, I know my letter was a little ambiguous, too. There are two residents of the street, they're brothers, who are not supporting it.
That's what I thought, too. When you said one, I thought you cleared one up.
But, but we have one person's half of the street already. We don't need his. We only need the one. So even though his brother is not supporting us, we don't need, we own his half of the street already.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, it's a little, it's a little squirrely there, but I just want to make it clear.
Yeah, I thought there was two.
There are two people who aren't supporting us, but we only need...
You don't need his.
We don't need, we already have his half of the street.
So what are you looking for from Austin?
Well, we're looking, I guess, for a number of things. First of all, you know, at understanding that at least if we go through the process, you will exercise the power. Secondly, we'd like your support at the town meeting and to the extent it matters to, at the finance committee for their recommendation as well.
Well, supported town meeting would, would hinge, I suppose, on the assessment of the DPDW as to whether the street's in shape to be...
Yeah, we understand that.
Excepted, other than that, I don't have any objection. We would take it as a matter of course.
Short of an indemnification of the town in terms of costs. That's obviously the other, other...
Right, they would have to incur the cost.
So, and to follow up, of course, so I did submit the plans to Tracy, and we do need the board to do the layout before, before the town meeting as well. But, um...
That may be, we're gonna make that?
No, not tonight. We're gonna look at the material, town meeting.
I'm gonna say, will we be able to make the town meeting, looking at the layout and everything?
It's tight, real tight.
I have no problem with it, it's just I don't know.
We have every, we have every confidence that you find administrative staff can take care of that with...
Sean, have you talked to our legal counsel about this street at all?
Just in passing, and, I mean, council, council's advice is no different on this than anything else. Again, as long as the town is indemnified, and obviously the only real liability we, you know, incur that we worry about is gonna be financial, so...
Right.
That's, you know, any conversations were sort of preliminary because I had a variety of conversations with a couple of Mr. Lane and who's the gentleman that works for you?
Jim Hesse.
Jim, yeah, and Mr. Dalby and a few other residents, so. Again, with indemnification in place, it's something council would certainly recommend.
Okay.
Or not recommend against, I guess you'd say.
We'd, we'd probably get a couple of motions, one to eminent domain and then one to lay it out.
Well, we don't have the layout...
Can't do it tonight?
Yeah, you can't do that tonight.
No, but I mean, we need to do that before the meeting, I meant, town meeting.
But we can, we can vote on the condemnation, I suppose, if that's on.
Absolutely.
All right, then we'll look for a motion.
The motion would be that the board votes to take, to condemn and take by eminent domain a portion of...
Murphy's Way.
Murphy's Way, identified as...
Well, we'll have to look at the layout plan for that.
Okay.
The establishment should have a...
We'll reference the lot, the parcel we all have.
Okay.
Yeah. Map. Yeah.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any discussion?
The discussion usually happens before the vote.
Yeah, I know. And I think you need a motion to start the layout process.
You're right, as usual.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
They'll take those signs down, hopefully.
Hopefully it won't happen again. Guess no one's here for sandwich, huh? I guess no one's here for sandwich.
Yeah, but that's okay. This is just the intention, it's a prelim before the layout.
You want a sandwich? You want a sandwich? Somebody have supper. Oh, I don't have sandwiches for supper.
I'll have a BLT.
Yeah, we're gonna get that one, never go back. We're gonna, we'll take sandwich, get that out of the way, then we'll...
All right. Let's do it.
Okay. As for the...
Intention to layout.
Layout and make a public way.
Move that the board vote, the intention to lay out and make public way, Sand Wedge Drive.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, Bruce, we'll go back up to high school project.
Okay, I, I attended the construction meeting on Wednesday, returning from my vacation. And everything right now, the punch list is still a work in progress. It's, it's not 100% finished. The commissioning is still ongoing, and the commissioning won't be finished till November sometime. They have to have winter conditions in order to finish the commissioning.
Now, will it be conditioned as a first lieutenant, major?
It will be commissioned as a Oxbridge High School.
Okay. The rank of what?
Rank of freshman to senior. In your, in your, in, in the packet, I put the three "we" look ahead in the reading file, and I also put the commissioning resolution log, all the problems they've come up with so far and the ones that are still open. That was put in the reading file, too, so when you get a chance, you can see what's going on. It's, usually air handling units that aren't working or, you know, something along with the alarms or small things that aren't, that really aren't too hard to fix. And then I also, once, when we left the meeting, when everybody left the meeting, the joint meeting we had about the school fields, I handed out the Oxbridge budget status scope for the south field and the north field. On that sheet, I hand it out to you, gives, gives you everything that's going on with the fields. And, you know, just to give you a rundown, like, the track is almost finished, the, they started putting out the synthetic turf today. It's all, it's all at the high school, just to meet, to be put out and, you know, and it'll take a while to do it, so we're figuring around the middle of November for the turf field, but there won't be anything planned on it this year. And then you'll see in the handout I gave you, it mentions the irrigation system, it's, and it mentions the concrete pad for press box that's already been poured, the conduit going to the press box, the scoreboard, it talks about the scoreboard. I'm not gonna say much about the scoreboard because until it's donated, like, I'm not, I'm staying away from that one. And then they bought a generator in order to run the scoreboard right now. In the north fields, they'll be working on the baseball field, they're gonna, they're putting down the topsoil and they're gonna, they've already seeded it, and...
Is that gonna be artificial turf or...
No, the north fields are just gonna be regular grass. And you're gonna have the irrigation with that, too, and you'll have the backstops and the fencing along with the south field. Most of the thing is the security of the fencing. They have the fencing in there. The tennis courts are being worked on today. It should be the final, the final... Surface went down today, and this week sometime, they should be lining it, and you'll, it'll should be ready to go within the next week or two. So that should be all done.
Is it, is it tar base?
Yes, asphalt.
Asphalt.
Late, late tech stuff. And that should be all done, this week or, this week sometime or early next week. So I imagine they'll, I don't know if they're gonna use them this, this year, they haven't really said, but I know they're not gonna use the football field till next year, the artificial surface.
Well, Bruce, what is artificial, is it like a carpet?
No, it's like, it's, it's, it's a fake grass, but it's two different types.
But is it, do they roll it out?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. It's in a trailer right now. It's all, it's rolled out and stitched together.
And what's under it?
Well, you got, well, there's sand.
Oh, sand?
Sand.
If you look now, you can see it. It's got a sand base on it, and then there's like little rubber in the carpet.
In the carpet.
You know, if you watch an NFL game, you see this black stuff.
You see the rubber come up when they kick it?
Well, it's, it's so you, they don't twist, you don't, less injury to the legs.
And your legs in dirt.
Yeah.
It's little, small, fine pieces of rubber. And when you, when, when they kick the ball, you see the rubber come flying up, even in the pro games. The same company that's making this turf field made the Buffalo Stadium where the Buffalo Bills played or play.
When they, when they kick it and stuff comes out, does that leave a hole in the...
No, no, it goes right back down. Then if, they do need, if they do find some spots where they keep, keep on kicking off from or do a field goal from, they will have additional rubber to replace it with.
Is that something that would be done by the people at the school or you call somebody in the door?
The school, school will be able to handle it.
Kind of like a big roller broom, keep it...
And basically, that's, that's about it right now. We've changed the meetings, the construction meetings are every two weeks now instead of every, every Wednesday. It'll be every other Wednesday. I imagine after, sometime after November, that'll be it, because we, we received the warranty letter on the 6th of this month, so we'll have a year from the 6th of this month on the warranty. Other than that, everything's going pretty well, if anybody has any questions, any at all, you know, the school, all the fields. Once we left that meeting, a joint meeting, all, all the, everything was voted on, the irrigation systems and everything they're gonna put into it. And I gave you, on, on the paper, you'll see what's not part of the scope. You'll see like bleachers aren't in the scope yet, or in the north field, lighting, bleachers, same thing in the south field. But they got as much as they could out of it, and we'll get more off the list if we have more money left over. But that's about all I have, if anybody has any questions.
Thanks, Bruce. Okay, proclamation. I have the United Nations and its family of agencies work to approve the people's lives throughout the world through peace building, environmental, substantially, emergency relief, human rights, and global health work. The board recognized the importance of the work, the UN, on October 24th, 2012, the 67th anniversary of the United Nations. Since 1947, every U.S. president, beginning with Harry Truman, has issued a proclamation asking citizens to observe this special occasion. This year's celebration focuses on the topic, the United Nations, solutions for a prosperous world. We hope you will recognize October 24th, 2012, as United Nations Day and ask other interested individuals, groups, and schools in your community to participate in UN Day activities. Thank you.
I move that the board proclaim October 24th, 2012, United Nations Day, solutions for a prosperous world.
Raise your second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
I don't see a lot of movement towards a prosperous world. There were great hopes when the United Nations was founded, as, as you may recall. I don't think it's lived up to that promise. The, you have a organization where mass murderers, simply by virtue of being the president or leader of some country, is head of the United Nations Council on Human Rights, as Saddam Hussein was at one time and others had been at one time. They have, in fact, been largely ineffective in keeping the peace. The, the bureaucracy is so slow and encumbered with various interests that it makes it virtually impossible for them to do their function. And the main reason is that you have it within one organization, company, country, vastly different types and development. You have mature companies, countries, prosperous countries, that have certain rules and certain amount of democracy within them. In the same organization, you have murderous dictators that think nothing of killing 30% of their population. I don't mind supporting some of the work done by some of the UN agencies because some of those, you know, agencies do some good work, but overall, I think the time has gone in its present form, and I can't support the proclamation.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. No. Although I made the second, I kind of agree with what Peter said. They don't seem to be moving toward preventing any genocide or anything else that goes on.
Okay. All right. Buy and department, the approval on the fee schedule for apparatus usage.
I had some questions, but I think Sean answered them. I just didn't understand what kind of things that we did would entail fees other than ampliance and so forth, but now I understand where it is.
Any other questions?
Move that the board approve the fee, the buy apartment fee schedule attached here, too. Attached to the minute of the meeting.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting minutes, nine, 10, 12.
The, the section on the town manager update. The town manager updated the board on the following topics, the new conservation administrator started today, okay, fine. There'll be a new key card system, good. Variety of training seminars. The town manager attended a variety of meetings. Do we need that? I mean, there's nothing, you know, you're soon as you're gonna attend meetings.
I didn't see where he went.
Yeah, I mean, doesn't say anything. Meeting will be scheduled with school personnel to discuss maintenance of the new high school grounds. Will that include the issue of the maintenance of the turtle sanctuary?
No one at the school knows anything about the turtle san- sanctuary. The school is responsible for the turtle fence, for the fence. That's it. So.
Okay, so who's, so who's responsible for?
Well, we're worried, actually, there's been another wrinkle as far as that goes, far as that, what do we call it?
Conservation restriction.
Conservation restriction on that property anyway, so that's just, that's another addition here. So we need to look and see exactly what, I have to do a little more work on it. That's basically what it, what it boils down to. I know the school has no idea what I'm talking about when I mentioned turtle pond.
Well, I, I talked with Don about that. He said, you know, yes, they own the fence, but beyond that, they're not in it. But the board voted that foolish conservation restriction and by voting that, we undertook certain responsibilities. So.
And I don't, I'm not familiar exactly what, exactly the restriction is.
So you have to look at the?
Correct. Right, and I sort of view that as, and I may turn that over to ConCon as well, just 'cause, you know, they're the experts.
I just didn't know if this particular item covered that. That was the source of my question.
I would say no. I haven't finished yet. I am asking questions, but I haven't, you know.
All right.
And number seven, member issues, the board had a general discussion. Since it doesn't say what we discussed, why don't we leave it out? And Mr. Baggers here and discussed the following topics, new key card, but it doesn't say anything, so why don't we just leave that out? It doesn't, there's nothing there.
Well, that's a member issue.
It's on the second page.
Here we go.
Okay?
Very good.
What's the time period on those new cards?
November.
Because we don't have any other, any of the old ones, right?
I think the town clerk has one of the cards. The school department has, has, has the cards. And we may end up using the same type, type of card. It's how they're programmed and how the access is granted. So, I mean, the actual physical cards, I think Kelly just has one left. So.
I'll see if I can coin Don into a card, give him a card.
He'd be the man to see.
He's the man, yeah. Okay.
You don't have a card for here?
I, no, I misplaced it.
Or Lee. Lee is the other one who does the IDs, so maybe you have more luck with Don. I'm not sure.
Before I forget, how long will that area lift be?
I could use that up in my house if they want.
I could use it too. I'm sitting here doing nothing.
Waiting to move it.
We put in a couple of phone calls to the contractors last week and I, I know David Genero did and he wasn't in today. I guess he was sick, so I'm not sure if he's heard back from them. So we're sort of urging them to sort of move on because obviously that space there also, not only would some people like to park there, but that space is also scheduled to be pulled up at some point, right? Because we're gonna have green space there.
Are they finished their job?
As far as I know, they are.
Okay.
They are, have a couple other jobs in town. Their little, small job at the library and I think we're gonna end up having them fix the, look, look into the leaks at Blanchard as well, so.
Might as well, while it's sitting here.
Right.
Don't move it too far.
I'm working on getting it out there. I don't like it anymore than you do, so.
Well, you know, you rent the, I'm sure they rented it by the monk.
Right.
It's gonna be possible.
Right, which is their problem, yeah. So. Or they have a connection, which is what I'm guessing.
Or they own it. They have to own it. They do enough work. They may own it. It's worthwhile to do that.
The thing is, they, you know, that particular configuration is ideal for what they did here. It may be worthless at the next job. You know, so it makes sense to rent those things rather than buy them unless you.
That one's pretty good though. That one reaches way over, you know. Some just go up nice and tall. You can't get to the wall.
Okay, any other questions on those, on that date, minutes?
Motion to accept as amended. Second.
Motion made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
Three, warrant abstention. Okay, the nine, 19, 12.
That was at the school.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Motion to accept the minutes of the nine, September 19, 2012.
Second. Motion made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
View this? Okay, town manager update.
I don't have a ton of, ton of stuff. I was approached by the town of Mendon, which lost its building commissioner slash inspector recently, so Mendon approached Uxbridge regarding some intermunicipal agreement for inspectional services, not just building inspector, but also plumbing and wiring. So I'm gonna sort of look into the financial feasibility of that and it's something that I, I may be bringing to you sometime in the near future.
I'd like to know how many inspections are outstanding, you know, before we go into something like that.
Outstanding here?
How long have we?
Well, we don't have inspections outstanding here in town. I mean.
We don't have any outstanding inspections?
We have them scheduled, but, I mean, no more than a week. Yeah, I mean, we don't have people. Yep, all right. To, to my knowledge, that, that's, that's the info that I get from upstairs.
Is Romeo still out?
Romeo is retired, basically. Yes. And that's one of the positions that we've had a contract inspector of wires working for the town since Romeo fell ill. He's continuing to fill that role, so I'm in the process of posting for the electrical inspector. However, if we were to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with another town, there's a possibility that those jobs would obviously increase in time. So we would advertise for a full-time position as opposed to a part-time position. And it's all gonna depend on, I, I don't wanna see the town incur any, obviously, any financial burden just to help out Mendon. So we're gonna have to take, take a look at what it would cost to bring these people on full-time, what sort of permitting revenue Mendon is generating and then just do a simple cost benefit analysis, so.
The, the only downfall, downside of that is you have one person. Now, Romeo was not only our electric inspector, he also did Millville and I think Blackstone.
Peter Harper works for three other towns as well.
Yeah, Peter Harper's in, in here. And, and many times, they'll make their own arrangements with inspectors in other towns to cover them, you know, that gives the town the service without increasing the, the full-time stuff. Just something to consider.
And our inspectors, there are a couple of our inspectors have that, but we also, we do have a couple of official backups as well. That was, I mean, we got Jack on. We also, we have, we also have a, yeah, Larry Weirzma. We, we have a couple of backups for the other inspectors as well, who are actually on the books, you know, that we have negotiated a rate with so that if, so that in the event we have sickness or, or for whatever reason the inspector can't fulfill his duties, then we have somebody else to step, step in. So we, it's one of the few places, one of the only places we actually have any redundancy, so sort of in town hall, I would, I would say, right? Which is kinda nice.
One of the problems that, that we have is that they keep increasing the number of things that you have to have an inspection for or a permit for. I was looking not too long ago upstairs, you need now permission from the government to change your front door on your house, to change a door on your house. It used to be the building code, the building inspection, had to do with structural integrity only. And now they cover a whole host of things. And the, the movement for that always comes from the industry because every industry and every group wants to grow and grow and grow, but it's a big burden on people and it makes it difficult for the towns to fill these positions. And you're always waiting for this inspector or that inspector. And it's, it just increases the friction of life imposed by government. And there's no countervailing force.
Your government.
No, I'm not government. I'm just a, I do what I can.
You're just a farmer.
But it takes, it takes real effort and it's, it's not there.
What else? Our November town meeting warrant successfully closed at 5:00 PM on Friday. We did have a few warrants. Sorry, our articles come in Friday afternoon. So we'll be, we'll be finalizing that, I would say, in the next week or two.
How did we make out with the bids for the school opening up after which? Did we get any bids?
That was my next point, actually. Yeah. No, that's fine. No, it's good to call. I'd have forgotten it, actually. So we got one response to the RFP for the Blanchard School and that was from the Uxbridge Housing Associates, who came to the board back in the spring and sort of pitched its plan for housing. So we have 60 days to respond, so in the next couple of weeks, again, we'll be looking at the, at the proposal itself and make sure it worked with all specs and then we'll, it'll, it'll go to you folks whether you want to.
They requested, we, they, we gave them 60 days, but if you get a chance, if you wanna look at it, I'd kinda like to get something in 30 if they could.
When we first, you know, stopped using that as a school, that was my first thought. It makes sense to use that for elderly housing. It's a lo- good location. You know, there's a little variety store nearby. People can go and there are some parks in the area and it's close to the other center. It just makes a lot of sense.
Well, it's good program because they're gonna tie it into the Brown and Eagle then.
The sooner.
When I, when I, excuse me, when I first approached them, they didn't have an interest. And so apparently something changed in the intervening.
If we, if the town were to respond positively to that proposal, then it's at that point that Uxbridge Housing Authority, subject to the land development agreement that we'd have to execute with town, would then be able to exhibit site control, which would then allow them to start their submission into the grant cycle. Because as the, as you'll read in the, as you'll read in the proposal, they're not anticipating having actual final funding in pros- in, in hand until probably 2015. Because this has to go, because of the nature of these projects, the money is out there and there's a 90-plus percent, you know, probability that, that the project will be approved. However, they make these groups undergo, you know, sort of stay in the queue over and over and over again. It's like getting into the Hall of Fame or something like that, right? You get, you get voted in. Sometimes you don't get enough votes, so you come around the next year and you try and get voted in again, you try and get voted in again. So typically, it's about two and a, it's about two and two and a half years.
And say it's environmentally friendly and the money will just flow in.
Typically, it's four to five grant cycles, so that's the, so that's the, sort of the, the motivation for their.
So if you get a chance, you wanna look at that file, maybe we can approve, you know, let that go in within 30 days rather than 60.
What else? I'll be conducting a department head meeting tomorrow at the fire department. And we were supposed to undergo some training, not some de-stress training, Peter, but some actual managing workplace conflict through Maya, but that training sort of fell through for this month, so I'm trying to reschedule for next month. But most of my department heads have responded to requests for their capital, capital plan. I'm trying to convene the capital planning committee as soon as possible this year. I'd like to have it accomplished in October and have recommendations out hopefully before town meeting in, in November. So, so that'll happen tomorrow. Unfortunately, I have to announce the unfortunate resignation as the chair of the planning board or from the planning board of Dr. Charles, Charles Lutton. He's served for, what, over five years now on the planning board, so we're def- definitely gonna miss him. The good news is that we do have an associate member on that board who's been on there for six, seven months now, so that person can step in. So we'll maintain a full, full board, which, which will be nice. So there will be a reorganization, I anticipate, of that board in the next meeting or two.
Sean, just one second, just on that subject of appointments. The, the charter has all those appointments being three-year terms. Now, I know under state law, most of those things are three-year terms, but under a charter, it doesn't, they don't have to be. And I wonder what the relative advantages are of three-year term versus indefinite term or a one-year term. Just, just give it some thought because it's just, you know, it's there and, you know, it doesn't, I don't think it has to be.
Off the top of my head, and whatever, I will think about it, but I think one of, off the top of my head, I think one of the things, one of the advantages to having terms is that the idea comes up and so maybe you're sitting at your house and you've never thought about it before and you'll, hell, there's an opening on the planning board. Hey, maybe I'll do that. Whereas if we have indefinite appointments, the only time it's ever gonna, might come up is if someone decides to leave, which may or may not be a bad thing, right? So maybe it's good to have the same folks on the board for 100 years. Maybe it's good to, with no, it's, whatever. I don't know. How do you argue about the Supreme Court? Do you like a lifetime appointment or do you wanna, or do you want term limits?
No, I like term limits. But you see, well, you mentioned, you know, you have to wait for someone to, you know, resign if it's on the, but it doesn't have to be.
Or to be removed.
Yes. And unfortunately, for some reason, governments don't like to re- remove anybody. Except in this town manager, we remove.
Except for town managers. We don't have a problem with that.
But I mean, it does happen and it, and that's why you have sometimes boards that just don't get anywhere because it's, they get into a rut and nothing happens. Anyway, just, just a thought.
Thanks. What else? I guess just as a point of reference, every now and again, I guess, Peter, you're the one who tends to be concerned about the current status of litigation in, in town. There is a status conference in front of the Land Court Judge on Thursday regarding Deborah North versus the planning board, which is basically a remand case. It's the property owned by Gary Vecchione now at 170 Heckless Street. So hopefully, we're gonna get some direction out, out of that. The early remand last year, basically, the court basically told the planning board it needs to relook at the decision that it came to in the year 2000. And the planning board at that time asked basically for a, just almost a completely new submission from Mr. Vecchione, ostensibly because it's been 12 years. It's been a long time since that, since, since that decision came down. Mr. Vecchione's sort of interpretation of things was that, was that the planning board didn't have the right to review it sort of de novo, that it had to sort of review only its own very narrow decision that it had made in, in 2000. Town's position is that the law doesn't say that. Town's council position is that the law doesn't say that. So we're gonna try and get the judge to give us one direction or another on Thursday and say, listen, there's gonna be, this is a broad review or it's a narrow review. The town really doesn't have a position either way. I just, we just need some, some direction because right now, no, no hearings are taking place on this simply because there's a question of how broad this, the scope of the remand is. Because in the, in the remand instructions, the judge sort of left it open, which is another reason why as the town, we believe that the planning board is correct in asserting its right to a broad, broad review. So anyways, that, hopefully we'll get some.
The town doesn't care either way, then why are we?
The town doesn't, the planning board does. The planning board is insisting on a broad review.
Okay.
Which Mr. Vecchione disagrees, so I'm saying as the town in terms of, whatever, what I was saying is I, the town doesn't necessarily care which way the judge comes down. I don't know that the planning board does either until it gets a direction. If the judge were to say, this must be a narrow scope review, the planning board will happily smile and go ahead and review it narrowly. We'll rewind back to 2000. So that, that, that's all I was saying. There's no, I don't think there's any more or less advantageous position for the town to take. So all I'm trying to do is support the planning board and make sure that it's doing its, its work legally.
And that's fine if, if they feel that they want a broad review. But if they don't care either, again.
One of the reasons I want the judge to weigh in on this is because, as is the case with, with a lot of litigation in this town and boards, sometimes there's some personal biases that creep in. Some, sometime it's not so much the project that gets, that's being examined, but it's the applicant.
Yeah.
And so we're gonna let the judge decide and then we're gonna go however. We're not gonna fight either way. Absolutely, he is, absolutely. It's just.
I don't think that, there are some people who are concerned about what's going on and where it's going. I don't think that uh, there are some people who are, are concerned about what's going on and where it's going and everything else, so I.
This was a case, we tried to negotiate, I can tell you that, I did try, tried to negotiate, we weren't really able, able to come to any, any uh common ground, so um, we can get this issue resolved, then we can, uh, the closer we come to resolving this, then we can push even, even harder to, because ultimately, we want to avoid trial. We don't want the judge to decide, make the decision for us, we're pushing for another remand with specific instructions, that's gonna let us get this deal, deal done, so.
Yeah, I think one of the things he did was he, being on the planning board back then when it came in, it was for condos.
Yeah.
All through there.
Yeah.
When this came back up, Gary came in and said, now he wants to farm it. So the plan should have been changed to a farming garden, that's what he wanted.
Well, do you need planning board approval to have a?
Not to, not to dig, no, not to dig, but that, the road, now he wants to go back the other way.
Condos again?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Which is his right.
Yeah.
But he got to be able to dig because he came in as a farm. Zone A.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just some of the things that happened, kinda, you know.
Right.
He should have just came in one way or the other, I mean, the planning board rejected it, it was 'cause of line of sight, which, you know, 'cause you got the, you got the DPW, you got Old Eldale coming out, and they're right across the street.
I really, I don't know, I, I know approximately where it is, if I haven't.
Yeah, right along the, well, if you went by, so the road's cut all the way through.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I didn't wanna try the case, I just wanted, just to keep you, keep you apprised of what's going on, and uh, let's see. That's about it, I mean, I've, I, Thursday, I won't be in the office, I'm going to a, a boot camp that's uh sponsored by the Mass Municipal Association. Again, it's recommended for town administrators who've been serving for less than three years, just um hit some of the, it's just more training to sort of help me do my job more effec- effectively, so um, did I miss anything, Tracy? I think that's what I have.
Okay, uh, remember issues?
I received the, the updated version of the suggested changes to the charter.
The charter, yeah, I did.
Under this, what they're gonna do, um, the current charter says, the manager prepares a budget with consultation with the Board of Selectmen.
Right, yeah.
Now, we haven't been doing that at all for ten years, um, so they're changing it. And now it says, um, after presentation to the Board of Selectmen. So, instead of consultation in advance of the budget, the manager's gonna prepare the budget, and then present it to us as a feinte complé. And I talked to Harry about, Harry Massey Office, and, you know, he said, the reason they're doing this, because the board doesn't do its job. I said, I admit completely that the board has not done its job and is not doing its job. But it's possible for the board to do its job. With this change, it will no longer be possible for the board to do its job, because we will have nothing to do with the budget, it'll be presented to us, and then, and then that's it. Um, another interesting little tidbit, um. This is in the Board of Selectmen. Except for the purpose of such investigation, as may be authorized by this charter, the selectmen shall deal with all town offices and employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the town manager, solely through the town manager. Now, let me tell you, I don't care what the charter or charter says. If I want information from the fire chief, or the police chief, or someone that drives a truck, I'm not gonna ask the town manager to get it for me, it's inefficient, it's foolish, it's a waste of time. Plus, if the Board of Selectmen is going to get all its information from a manager, then we serve no purpose at all, because all of our information will come from him, no other source. It's just completely unworkable, I don't understand what it is they're trying to accomplish. I don't think they're thinking about the ramifications of the words that they're putting on in this thing. Um, they fixed some mistakes, but none of those mistakes were, you know, earth-shattering. But the things they're putting in its place are, um, doesn't make any sense. They want, there's a provision under state law, if you have an elected position that's vacant, generally, except for the Board of Selectmen, uh, the Board of Selectmen, together with the remaining members of the other board or committee, get together and they, they've an appointment till the next election, okay? Now, with the finance committee, as you know, they used to be all appointed by the moderator.
Yeah.
Town meeting changed there, and the charter changed there, to have the moderator appoints four out of the seven.
Three elected.
Just three are elected.
Yeah.
So what they're saying here is, if no one runs for the office, or if there's a vacancy, then the moderator's gonna make the selection, why? And I've asked the question, you see, if you wanna change something, I'd like to have a reason, so I can listen to the reason and say, gee, that makes sense, or it doesn't make sense. But if the moderator already appoints a majority, four out of the seven, now we're gonna let him point five of the seven? Doesn't make sense to me. I'm not saying one way is better than the other, because you can have bad people, whether they're elected or appointed, but still, I don't see any, any overriding reason to say, well, the moderator should be given that authority, it just doesn't follow. And they, they keep this business about um, for things that are going to be, um, you know, public meeting, you know, I mean, public notice, you're publishing a paper, having general circulation.
Right.
Doesn't mean everybody gets it, they just, paper is, has general circulation to town. They're changing it, believing that, but then it says, all through media or medium, this broadcast throughout the town. There is no such thing, there is no such thing. So what are they thinking? And I've asked the question, but I didn't get any answers. But we're putting something in the charter that, that's a nullity, why? Um, I don't know. I, I, I wish the board would take some time, as a board, to discuss some of these changes, because most of the changes affect the Board of Selectmen.
It seems to be the board that they're trying to eliminate, or at least reduce to a policy board. And I really second what Peter has been saying, I don't particularly care about the way that we're being reduced. Just have to wait for the town meeting.
Well, I know, I know the, the, the reason for it, because it's obvious we don't do any, one-third of this year is gone, we've done nothing.
We can't.
We haven't, yes, we can, we, we can do things, but we don't. We have this item, strategic projects, I don't know why it's on the agenda, we don't do anything.
Peter, I put that on the, on there, and I asked everybody, you didn't want to do anything. You didn't wanna do zoning problems, you didn't wanna do any bylaw problem, you said, no, no one wants to change it, so I'm not doing it. So that's why there's nothing there, and I told you, yes.
No, 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 no.
Well, yes, Peter, I'm not gonna argue about it, but.
I said, and this is what always happens, you don't wanna talk about it, but this is the reality, Peter.
Go ahead.
Bruce, when he was chairman, had on the agenda, the bylaws lousy, we gotta change it, and that's just a fact. And then three minutes, less than three minutes later, uh, you said, well, it's just definitions, and uh, and so that was the end of it. Okay, now, if you really believe the problem with zoning is just definite, some changing definitions, that's fine, because that's easy. So, I don't think that's the case.
Okay.
But certainly, if you think that's the case, I encourage you, let's talk about the definitions that need to be changed. I'm willing to work with you on that.
Well, I can say the same to you, you say there's a lot of problems, why don't you bring them up?
I brought them up a number of times, but if, wait a minute now, hear me out, logically, if the solution is just changing some definitions, I'll throw the other stuff away, because if that will solve the problem, I'd rather have an easy solution than a.
My problems may not be the same as yours, the definitions, I, okay, but you don't wanna explain any of yours.
I'll explain them anytime you want.
Then why don't you write them down, and we'll talk about them?
Okay, put it on the agenda, we'll talk about it.
Well, that's what I said before, and you said, oh, you did exactly what he did, I said, okay, we're not.
No, 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 you want me to do it, I want the board to do it.
Well, your, your problems, we can discuss.
I'm one of five members, Peter.
Right, but when you bring the problem up, we can discuss it, I don't know what you're thinking.
Well, but your kind is so ea- you're saying just the definitions, why don't we start there, isn't that logical?
If mine's so easy, why don't we start with the tough stuff?
Why would you start with the tough stuff?
We don't like to argue with you, it's gonna go round and round, you never answer me anyways.
But okay, no problem, you put on the agenda, you set aside some time, and I'll go over the things that need to be, I think, need to be fixed.
Okay.
There's no problem with that.
And Bruce was doing the, the committees, and I've been, I've set up. Well, he was gonna put the list of all our committees, so we know what's.
We don't know what committees we have?
Oh, no, who expired, who's still there, he was just getting the, everything lined up for us. That's what he was doing, who's still on the board, who's the chairman, who's vice chair. A lot of that stuff, 'cause new changes were happening.
Hey, the town clerk has all that.
I know, Peter, but that's what he was gonna do, right? Please, can you just sit there for a minute and listen? All right?
Well, I've said to you for a third of the year, and we've done nothing.
You've been here for fourteen, you've been here for fourteen years, don't mind a third of the year. And the other thing was, that I'm trying to get with David, he's gonna have a prelim budget for our next meeting, so we can look at, 'cause we don't have the revenue sheets yet, but that's the starting point.
I don't think that's the starting point.
Well, I'm saying, this is what I think, we can look at that, and then tell us what you think you want, or not you, but as a board, we should change, or whi- which direction do you wanna go to?
Well, I know exactly the direction I wanna go in, but that's the only one person, it's not, not the board.
Well, no, we discussed it, I just thought if we had a preliminary budget that David puts together, 'cause we don't have the revenue sheets or not.
I don't need a preliminary budget from David, because our, our budget from either year doesn't go from here to here, or there to here.
At least with.
I don't need that.
Okay, so I won't give you one.
You can, I'll be happy to take it, Peter. And I'm saying, I don't have to waste a third of a year waiting for a preliminary budget.
Okay, all right. Any other issues?
Well, the only thing I'd like to, uh, when it comes to determine who appoints what, what committee, like the uh guiding club, how is it, how is it determined who's gonna make the appointment, where it wasn't in existence before? Is it the town manager or?
Yeah, according to the charter, the town manager appoints where no other method of appointment is called for.
Oh, okay.
I didn't write it.
I know, I know. We'll be lucky to do janitors work in here. Anyways.
So what's gonna happen with every other group that wants to be a town agency?
I'm not sure, no one else has approached me in the year fourteen months that I've been here, so.
Well, no one has approached me, and I've been here twenty years. But if, if the policy is, somebody, some group says, I wanna be a town agency, see, I like to think of things in advance.
The town decides, this is the town is deciding.
On this.
On this, the town gets to decide. It's the town's money, it's the town, the town's town.
Yes.
The town's resources, so the town gets to decide.
That's correct, but you made it, you, you think it should be, and that, that's fine.
And I just, I don't, I don't have anything, because I don't even get, I don't even get, make a recommendation on this stuff, you guys do. Nobody cares what I think.
The board could make a recommendation, but that's, we've never addressed that issue.
Well, I think we, we rejected it.
No, 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 I know that, but I'm saying, in all the years, we haven't had people knocking on the door saying, hey, listen, we do nice things in town, we wanna be an official town agency, you see?
Which is why there wasn't a policy for it, 'cause it hasn't happened before, but things happened for the first time. And that's what, but in, in this case, I think we have to be responsive, I mean, obviously, we can't anticipate every contingency. So if we wanna build a policy now, we have to do it in response to this, because this is what.
Yes.
I don't think it's gonna be a case of opening the floodgates.
Yes.
Right, but.
All I, all I'm saying, Sean, is when this, when this first came to light, the first thing I did internally was say, gee, you know, what does this really involve? Why, what are the advantages, what are the disadvantages for the group and for the town? I think about this, I don't wait until something is done, and then, then start thinking about it, that's all.
How, how did you come up with the twelve thousand dollars to get it started?
It's no less, it's no more than twelve thousand dollars, that's typical revolving fund language.
What did you come up with that figure? Because we couldn't, we couldn't meet a request for school, uh, summer lunches for three hundred and fifty dollars, they only get two seventy. So I'm just wondering where we get all this money to start the garden.
No, there's no money, this is just, their, their account cannot exceed twelve thousand dollars, we're not giving them a dime.
So they're gonna sell, sell what they, they uh grow there?
I'm sorry?
They're gonna sell the food or?
No, they're not gonna sell most of it, no, they're gonna have, they're gonna live on donations, and the town isn't paying.
Nothing.
The town isn't giving them a penny, we've lent them the land, that's it. Yeah, no, there's not gonna be any appropriation for this group, they're not asking for any money, they're not planning to ask for any money. They're gonna, they're gonna uh fund themselves through, through don- donations, through the cost of, you know, whatever costs for you to put a plot up there. They're also gonna put themselves in a position to gain, you know, grants that exist in that particular. So in that sense, it's not gonna cost, it's not gonna be a line item on the town's budget, it is an account that we have to keep an eye on, and that's Peter's, Peter's arguments is that's to the detriment of the town. Maybe it's only five minutes, but it's five minutes that we could be spending doing something else.
I didn't say detriment, there, there's a cost.
A co- I apologize, you're right, a cost, I misquoted, right. So, but no, it's this, that number is just, we don't want that account to exceed this kinda money, that's all it is, there's no. And that's sort of, that's just a, an arbitrary number.
A number, we're gonna put like tw- twelve thousand in as seed money and to help it get rolling.
Nothing, they got what they've got.
No. I'll have to talk to you more often there, Sean.
Speaking of revolving accounts.
Yes.
Um, we now know that the, the uh food program at the senior center is not self-supporting.
I'd like to bring, if you wanna talk about that more, I'd like to bring Mr. General in to, to a conversation. We could, you could either come in and talk about it, or if you wanna talk about it in public, we can do that, because I did mention that to him.
Yeah.
He's more conversant in the finance language than I am, so I don't wanna butcher it all, but um, he disagrees, so.
Okay, he, he thinks it is self-supporting.
I'd like to have a conversation, just, I, I'd like to clarify that, just, I wanted you to know that, I remember, we did have a conversation, I did mention it to him.
All right.
So, if, I don't know if you wanna do that, just some morning here in town hall?
Yeah, that's fine, when you have the information on, you know, that's all I'm interested in.
All right.
It's supposed to be self-supporting, and if it isn't, I wanna know why.
I defended, I don't wanna get halfway down the road and lose my bearing, so I'd rather, yeah, honestly, I'd rather have him here, so.
Peter, can I bring something up? I've been approached several times about the roads and the bridges in this town. And I'd, I'd like to have somebody explain where all our money coming from the state is going to. The state of the bridges, we had a bridge study, although none of our bridges are currently being worked on. When do we expect to see them being worked on?
Well, Marywood Street's being worked on, the one down on one twenty-two's be, I mean.
Well, the state's working on one twenty-two.
Ben gave us a plan on the four bridges, right, so those are, those four bridges are being worked on, I think, right? I don't know about the others in town.
There is a plan for roads, I mean, Ben's got it just about, we have, we have a plan from last year, but I'm meeting with Ben again tomorrow. So we have a plan of what we can overlay and level, or Linwood Ave and Oak Street are two of our streets, they need construction. So he does have chapter money, he's gonna, we're gonna try to, we're gonna talk about that, see if we can get somewhere on that too with our.
Do they work on any kind of time schedule, it seems like that one up in Rockdale is supposed to be done by two thousand fourteen. They must be eating lunch there.
I know what they do, the crew that's on Rockdale, the crew that's on Uxbridge, they work here, one. They work here, one side, they go up there. That's why you don't see them all the time.
Okay.
And they come back, that's why it takes so long.
Now, if my memory is correct, the money we appropriated, $110,000 for the bridge in Culbert Study, we changed that. Originally, we were going to study all of them, but we changed, we did some, less than number of them, right?
Yeah, I think we, some of them were going to be done by the state, I believe, like the one in Heckla.
Well, the state does the study, they study all the things, and we have that.
Right, but I mean, we weren't paying for the one down in Heckla.
Yeah, but we, we, the town appropriated $110,000 to do a study of all the bridges in Culberts, so that if money comes available, then we'll already have the study. But we didn't do that study. We did a smaller study.
Yeah, I'm not, we can see about that.
And we decided to study the important ones and so forth.
We can see if we can get that, I think we have that.
We have it, we have a study, we've studied it.
Yeah, well, we did, yeah.
Yes.
Get a group of retired CBs down here, they'll get it done.
Okay. Any other issues? Motion to adjourn then. So move.
Second.
May I adjourn on favor?
All right.